Welcome to the Hayward City Council meeting. Today is March 7, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I would like to invite Councilmember Marquez to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. Please rise if you're able to.
Thank you. And now I'd like to ask the city clerk to do roll call, please.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Andrews.
Present.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Present.
Councilmember Marquez.
Present.
Councilmember Roach.
Present.
Councilmember Syrup.
Present.
Councilmember Zermeño.
Yeah.
Mayor Salinas.
Present. Thank you. I'd like to now read a closed session announcement. The City Council met in closed session on Tuesday, March 7, 2023, at 5:30 p.m., pursuant to posted notice and the Brown Act. With all members present and no public comments, the council discussed the following. One, personnel matter. The council continued its annual performance evaluation of the city clerk, consistent with its practice of annually evaluating the city clerk, city manager, and city attorney. Closed session adjourned at 6:05 p.m. So now I'd like to move on to our presentation, and today we will be acknowledging the American Red Cross Month presentation, and we have a proclamation. And of course, it's always nice to see an old friend, a good friend of mine from our northern city of San Leandro. And Mr. Gregory, if you can come to the podium, and let me, I will, to read it, I'm going to have Mayor Pro Tim Andrews to hold the proclamation, and I will read the proclamation. Let's see. And of course, the font of the proclamation is size, I think, size six font, so I've, but no. Okay. So proclamation presented to the American Red Cross Bay Area Chapter Alameda County Leadership Council, March 7, 2023. Whereas the American Red Cross has touched many lives in the city of Hayward as well as across the country and around the world, and whereas during American Red Cross Month, we thank those who contribute to the mission of the Red Cross, whether through time, money, or blood, and we invite others to support the Red Cross in helping people in need down the street, across the country, and around the world. And whereas the American Red Cross is synonymous with helping people and has been doing so for more than 140 years. Throughout the past year, the American Red Cross launched hundreds of disaster relief operations in the United States to help people affected by fires, floods, hurricanes, and tornadoes. And whereas the city of Hayward, the American Red Cross Bay Area Chapter works tirelessly through its nearly 7,300 volunteers to provide support, then disaster, then disaster strikes. When someone needs life-saving blood or the comfort of a helping hand, it provides 24-hour support to members of the military, veterans, and their families, and provides training in CPR, aquatic safety, and first aid. And whereas in the past year, the American Red Cross Bay Area Chapter helped more than 2,200 families with temporary housing, clothing, food, and mental health counseling during 1,087 local emergencies. The chapter trained more than 80,000 people in life-saving CPR, first aid, water safety, and preparedness education. The Bay Area Chapter provided emergency communications, counseling, financial assistance, and a caring presence to more than 8,000 local military families. The chapter supported many Bay Area hospitals, provided them with nearly 102,000 units of red cells, platelets, and plasma to patients in need. And whereas throughout the Pillowcase Project and the Home Fires Campaign, more than 6,700 local individuals and families received fire prevention training, supplies, and/or smoke alarms. And whereas for nearly 100 years, the United States presidents have called on the American people to support the Red Cross and its humanitarian mission. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, and because of its not a governmental agency, the Red Cross depends on support from the public to continue its humanitarian work. This is especially important in these challenging economic times, which impact the Red Cross and many people in our community and across the nation. Now, therefore, I, Mark Salinas, Mayor of the city of Hayward, do hereby proclaim the month of March as American Red Cross Month.
Neighbor to your north here, very briefly, two things I really need your help with. So we suspended a program called Sound the Alarm due to COVID. And what we're doing is we have volunteers that will go into anyone's home free of charge, they're trained volunteers, and they'll install smoke detectors. So changing of the time, which is controversial, but I don't want to get into that, but that's a good time to remind folks to change out their smoke detectors. Important to know, smoke detectors with batteries are no longer sold in the state of California. People still have them, they change the batteries, they test them, they go, buzz, buzz, buzz. Well, what happens is that photoelectric cell is not good after eight years or so. It accumulates dust, moisture, and it just doesn't work. So the buzzer works, you're testing it, you think you're good, you're not. So in the state of California, you can only buy smoke alarms that have sealed batteries, and they're sealed for 10 years. So it's good to know, and I've left my information with the city clerk, you can contact me. It's a win-win-win, all-around win if you have constituents, particularly in mobile home parks, vulnerable communities. It's just a good thing to do. On the blood side, in recent years, the eligibility has just amazingly turned around 360 degrees. So it's good to check out the eligibility requirements. People who thought they couldn't donate can. So diabetes, heart disease, all those cancers, all changed. The gay thing is still in flux, it's gotten better. This country is one of the last to do it and relax the standard entirely. But in particular, look at our room, look at our communities, the average donor in the United States is an 18 Caucasian. And our communities here, our hospital patients, are anything but. And we used to ask, we need blood, we need blood, but we used to call out the blood types. Well, that's kind of been relaxed, and we're looking for the best fit. So African-Americans who have sickle cell disease really are treated best with African-American blood. So we're really doing a big effort to invite people to donate. And last thing I'm going to say is our blood operations in Oakland are now moving to the Boy Scout headquarters on Davis Street in San Leandro. So it's coming closer to Hayward, and we'll be doing our blood distribution to our hospitals. We'll be doing, we won't do collections onsite, but we'll continue to do mobile blood drives. And that's another win-win. I mean, if you want a money shot running for office, put that needle out there. I'll never forget Johann Clay's, works every time. And I'll hold your hand if you need me. But it's.
Are we allowed to hold a baby at the same time?
Am I right?
Are we allowed to hold a baby at the same time? I'm joking.
I'll hold the baby. I'll give the baby and give it back. But I wanted to just make my comments short, but do you have any questions about who we are, what we do, and why we're here? And we're in your community already. Many of our volunteers live and help us base.
What was your name again? I didn't get your phone.
Michael Gregory, two first names.
What is it?
Michael Gregory. So that's it, folks.
Well, thank you, sir, and it's always good to see you. And of course, thank you for your service, your long and great service on the San Leandro City Council for so many years, so.
To be continued.
Well, okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'd like to move on to public comments, and this is reserved for people in the audience that would like to make a comment on something that is on the agenda or not on the agenda. And I see, actually, let me see if there's anybody online. We have TJ from Hayward Concerned Citizens. Go ahead and key up and talk.
Good evening, council. I'm TJ, representing Hayward Concerned Citizens. I wanted to address the consent item from last week's meeting about approving new ballistic body armor for HPD's Special Response Unit, and the one no vote made against that item. I want to promote a new slogan that might be of help. Don't skimp on public safety. If City Hall can put forth the $199,000 to remodel its bathrooms, then they can approve $130,000 for new ballistic body armor for our HPD. If you can take funds from five vacant police officer positions as seed money to get policy innovation workshop projects off the ground, then you can fund new body armor. When you say you care about our officers' safety, you have to put your money where your mouth is. Our police are tasked to protect and serve. Their safety is just as important as that of anyone else who lives in, works in, or passes through Hayward. If they make an ask of new equipment to keep them safe, as other countywide police departments regularly do, then by all means, approve it. Don't skimp on public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to now move on to Robert McKay. So what you want to do is come up here to the podium and, no? Okay. So our next public speaker is Peggy Gurnsey.
Hi, council, and to the new members that I haven't met yet. And I'm sorry I didn't have your email to send an email to you this afternoon. One of my concerns is that I am finding that when you assign an item for a staff member or to be looked into or changes in the community, you have a staff member or one or two staff members, they're in charge of it, they get the information. Citizens of Hayward, oh, we can put in information, but we can't read any of the information comes in, we don't get to talk to anybody who put in any information, there's no collaboration, and the decision comes down to that one employee who says, okay, council, in regards to the alcohol thing, they said, oh, yeah, you guys should go ahead and increase the alcohol sales. The new item that's coming up in regards to street vendors, there is one head planner, and there's another one, they are the "we" that I apparently am going to be able to talk to via email or whatever, but any other citizens that put in stuff or have opinions, we don't get to talk to them, and I don't think that's right. If you want to grow an intercollaboratory city, if you want to involve people of different groups, of different demographics, get us together, let us come together, and please don't have the staff member put in the spot of, well, you know, I don't have to notify you or whatever. It was nice that Steve notified me at the last minute, but I've been following this stuff for months and did not know things were coming up on the council. So I'm asking you to really look into this. One, it's not fair to put it all on staff unless in the past they've had 50 people and they're going, oh, man, we can't handle all that. You know, I know. So please, look into this and involve us. The only way to unify this city is to get us together, talking. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And it looks like that we do not have any more public comments, so I'd like to close public comments and move on to city manager's comments.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I don't have any comments this evening.
I'd like to close city manager's comments and move on to our action items and to our consent item, and I will entertain a motion from somebody on the dais. Moved by Councilmember Zermeño.
I'll second Marquez.
Seconded by Councilmember Marquez. And are there any questions? Seeing none?
Mayor Salinas, item number three.
Oh, yes, right. That's the little, that's.
Speaker on item number three.
Absolutely.
If we could pull that item, please.
So let me go back, and I apologize, Councilmembers Zermeño. Can we pull item number three for public comment? Okay, and then, okay, we're good. Okay, so I'm going to pull item number three for public comment. So can we move all the items except for item number three? Moved by Councilmember Zermeño, seconded by Councilmember Marquez. City clerk, if you take the roll.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Andrews.
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez.
Aye.
Councilmember Roach.
Yes.
Councilmember Syrup.
Yes.
Councilmember Zermeño.
Aye.
Mayor Salinas.
Yes. And then we have a public comment on item number three, which is Peggy Gurnsey. Yeah, yep.
One of my, I did not, I mean, seeing this amount of almost a million dollars, I'm concerned as to will we be able to see what more landscaping will be done before put in, or is this saying you've already decided on the bushes or the things that look like weeds and wild grasses? And how much maintenance is going to be needed to those bushes? How many other things can we put in their place that are regrowing or some of the, I think it's Spanish Heather is one, that's a beautiful green with blue flowered bushes that, just as beautiful. It grows slow, it covers the area. So I'd like to, I mean, I live off Mission Boulevard, I don't like what's been going in on Mission Boulevard. The, I think it's a golden flame tree, which looks like an acacia tree, has horrible, horrible allergy aspects to it. And I would like the landscape department to look in that. We have children as well as adults, and I have a caregiver who is, comes to work deathly ill because of stuff she can't breathe because of the things that are going on. So I would like to know more information about this, and is the, whether, I know it's being taken off tonight, but is this a set deal and it's already designed and ready to go? Okay. That's me.
Thank you. And then I don't know if the city manager wants to comment on that.
Unfortunately, yes, at this point, because we are, the council is voting to award the contract, this has already gone through the design process and will be, so the design is already completed on this project.
Okay. Thank you.
So what if people get sick and all that, and they turn, unfortunately, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Just a question along the same lines for staff, as part of the design review that staff completes before preparing a resolution for adoption, is there an analysis of health issues that might occur? I know we're optimizing for sustainable plants, but what about allergies?
I mean, we can, everyone's allergic to some things, so I mean, I think we have to be mindful and pick plants that are, you know, based on our arborist recommendations as kind of best suited for medians, and there's a lot of competing interests. We have to have trees that have small roots in order to accommodate so they don't buckle the streets. But we, I'm sure staff can look at this and see if there's, if those particular plants that are included in this project are particularly allergenic.
Okay. Thank you. So I'd like to close that item, and I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the motion.
Moved by Councilmember Roach.
I'll second and just comment that we can discuss this maybe at a future Council Infrastructure Committee meeting, so your concerns have been noted. Thank you.
Seconded by Councilmember Marquez with an excellent recommendation. And Madam City Clerk, if you take the roll.
Yes, yes, Mayor. Councilmember Andrews.
Aye, and I look forward to learning more about landscaping opportunities.
Councilmember Goldstein.
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez.
Aye.
Councilmember Roach.
Yes.
Councilmember Syrup.
Yes.
Councilmember Zermeño.
Yes.
Mayor Salinas.
And then item unanimously passes. Thank you. Moving on to the public hearing. Item number six, which is PH 23-023, Alcoholic Beverage Regulation Update, Adopt a Resolution Amending Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-1.2750, Alcoholic Beverage Outlets of the Hayward Municipal Code to Make Updates to the Regulations Governing Alcoholic Beverage Outlets Throughout the City and Finding That the Action Is Exempt from SEQA Review and Introducing an Ordinance Codifying the Amendments. And I believe we're going to have a report by Acting Development Services Director Sarah Bowser, and I will, who's going to kick this off? Is our deputy city attorney, oh, Ms. Bowser is online. There she is.
I am. I am. Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Excited to be here tonight to present the item. I am going to quickly turn this over to our associate planner, Steve Kowalski, who's done a great job spearheading this project forward. It is a strategic roadmap project in the economic section of our strategic roadmap, and we're just really excited to finally present this to council for your consideration. And so without further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Steve.
Thank you, Sarah, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm Steve Kowalski.
Mr. Kowalski, can you bring the mic up a little bit?
Yes. Sorry about that.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Steve Kowalski, I'm with the Planning Division, and I'll be presenting tonight. So on January 28 of 2020, the City Council adopted its fiscal year 2021 through 2023 strategic roadmap. The roadmap identified six strategic priorities for staff to address over its three-year lifespan, one of which was to grow the economy. One of the five projects included under this priority was a call to invest in programs that support Hayward businesses and workers. One of the efforts identified under that particular project called for revising the city's alcohol regulations to support existing full-service restaurants and to encourage more new full-service restaurants to locate in Hayward. Staff from the Planning Division, Police Department, and Economic Development Division began working together on this project in early 2022 and conducted extensive public outreach over a four-month period from July, I'm sorry, from April through July. The outreach efforts included interviews with the former Chamber of Commerce president and the manager of the Downtown Hayward Improvement Association, as well as the owners of several local restaurants and two popular micro, East Bay microbreweries. Staff also had the chamber distribute flyers to all 1,200 of its members and sent an email to nearly 110 local restaurant owners having active business licenses with the city. Using the input received from this outreach, staff presented a number of proposed amendments to the Council Economic Development Committee, or CEDC, in September to obtain feedback and direction for moving forward. Everyone who staff interviewed shared the opinion that the current requirement that full-service, the current ordinance, the ordinance's current requirement that full-service restaurants maintain at least 60% of gross revenues from food sales, with only 40% allowed to be derived from alcohol sales, was too strict. Historically, the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, or ABC for short, has defined a bona fide public eating place as an establishment where 50% of gross revenues is derived from food sales and not more than 50% from alcohol sales. These types of establishments are allowed to serve minors and families with children because they function as restaurants rather than bars by offering full meal service in addition to alcohol service. Aligning the city's definition for a full-service restaurant with ABC's historic definition is reasonable and logical in staff's opinion, and will still ensure that a significant amount of business at each establishment continues to be derived from food sales. Another suggestion was to amend the ordinance's definition of a full-service restaurant to allow partnerships wherein one entity owns the alcohol sales component of an establishment, while another owns the food service component. This would enable one individual to open an establishment like a bar or a microbrewery with a full kitchen and lease or sublease it to a chef who provides the food service and still allow the whole establishment to qualify as a full-service restaurant. ABC already allows this type of arrangement, so it makes sense that the city should as well, and it may help to attract some alcohol-oriented businesses such as microbreweries to the city by giving their owners, who may not have experience running a restaurant, the ability to find a food service provider to handle the food service component. Similarly, another suggested amendment was to allow the kitchen to either be constructed within the actual establishment or as a separate freestanding structure on the site that is anchored to the ground and connected to all necessary utilities like water and sewer. The council recently awarded Arthur Max Tap &amp; Snack Financial Assistance to proceed with a concept for a full-service restaurant with an outdoor beer garden on a vacant lot on B Street in which the kitchen and bar will both be housed in separate shipping containers that will be modified and outfitted with cooking facilities and alcohol-serving facilities. As such, a precedent for this type of full-service restaurant layout with a freestanding kitchen separate from the bar has already been established in the city. ABC already allows this type of arrangement. ABC already allows this type of arrangement as well, and allowing it would provide even greater flexibility for prospective owner operators of hybrid business models wherein different entities own the alcohol and food service components looking to locate in the city. To ensure that establishments utilizing these types of arrangements maintain food service at all times while alcohol is served, the proposed amendments require that they only be allowed to operate under one of three specific types of ABC liquor licenses for bona fide eating places, either a Type 41, Type 47, or Type 75 license. All three of these licenses require the establishment, excuse me, to operate as a restaurant as defined by ABC as opposed to a bar with meal service provided up to 30 minutes prior to closing time. One final suggestion from a local restaurateur was to change the time when happy hour discount pricing for alcohol is allowed from the current timeframe of 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. to 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. He felt that allowing happy hours to start earlier in the day could help restaurants better cover costs by capturing additional business from people whose workdays ended The CEDC expressed support for all of these amendments, but one member asked staff to explore ways to require all alcohol-serving establishments, both existing and new, to provide patrons with information on safe alternatives for getting home in the event of overconsumption. Another CEDC member asked staff to look at the regulations of neighboring jurisdictions to see if Hayward's were more or less permissive and to study the recent history of alcohol-related crimes in the city to determine if a high percentage could be attributed to overconsumption at local restaurants. The Police Department pulled data from the last several years on alcohol-related crimes to see if there was a clear indication that a significant number were attributable to overconsumption at restaurants, but staff was unable to identify any evidence that such a problem exists. Information as to where a perpetrator of an alcohol-related crime was drinking is not always readily available on police reports. And while the downtown area does typically see the highest level of such crimes each year, it also contains the highest concentration of other drinking spots such as bars and nightclubs. So it is not that easy to determine if overdrinking at restaurants is a serious problem. Staff does not believe it highly likely, however, and the Police Department, the agency responsible for enforcing the ordinance, has helped craft these amendments and does not believe they will result in overdrinking at restaurants. Now, in comparing the city's regulations to those of its neighbors, staff found that none of the other cities surveyed, which included San Leandro, Fremont, Alameda, and Union City, had a codified minimum ratio of food to alcohol sales, and none specified when happy hour discount pricing was allowed. Incidentally, none of these cities specifically allowed partnerships wherein separate entities own the food and alcohol service components of an establishment. So Hayward could be the first to have it codified if, if the council were to approve that particular amendment tonight. When presented the proposed amendments on February 9th last month, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward them to council with a recommendation for approval, but recommended the council change the timeframe when happy hour discount pricing can be offered from 2:00 to 7:00, or the current requirement, I'm sorry, of 4:00 to 9:00 to 3:00 to 8:00 rather than 2:00 to 7:00. They just felt that 2:00 o'clock was a little too early of a starting time and 8:00 o'clock was a better ending time to enable more folks to, to partake in happy hour. So tonight, staff is recommending that the council adopt a resolution supporting the proposed amendments and finding them to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and introduce an ordinance codifying the amendments as presented. And that concludes staff's presentation. We also have Detective Gabrielle Wright online to answer any questions for the Police Department in case the council has any. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski. And does city manager have any comment or anything? Okay. I'd like to close this portion and move on to council comments, or council questions first. and then I will start with Councilmember Syrup.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, wait, hold, I'm sorry. Wait. Keeps going up and down. I believe, I think I start at the top. I always get this thing confused. So Councilmember Roach, I believe you were the first one. My apologies.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kowalski, for the presentation. I really appreciate the comparison information you gave us from other cities. I think that's really helpful. And I guess some of the concerns I have about the question of, you know, the bar and the food being separated, I mean, I like the idea. I think it's sort of a modern idea. It sounds like that's kind of the new way people are doing things. But would there be concern, like, say you had three bars and one food establishment that was anchored somewhere nearby, would that qualify? Because I guess I'm concerned, I guess some of the concerns I've heard is, you know, could you have food trucks come in and satisfy the food requirement for the separated kitchen and bar situation?
So the way the amendment, the amendments are written, a food truck would not qualify because the kitchen, the cooking facility would have to be permanently installed on the premises. Detective Wright can probably
Please, can you raise the microphone?
Sure. Sorry. Detective Wright can probably chime in here as well, but I, I believe that when ABC issues a liquor license, it's for a restaurant and the three types of liquor licenses that we're recommending be allowed under the ordinance, the liquor license would basically apply to one restaurant with the bar on the same premises. So I don't think, I think Councilmember Roach suggested that the possibility of having multiple bars on an establishment with one restaurant, I don't think that's a possibility unless there would be separate liquor licenses for each establishment. But the way we're crafting, we've crafted these amendments, one establishment would have to have the food service component and at most just one alcohol service component. And one liquor license would have to be obtained by that establishment.
Okay. And then the other question about the happy hour situation, because, you know, I talked to some people in the community about it, that, you know, my, that there's some historical understanding that happy hour is really to fill that gap between lunch and dinner, to keep employees busy and, you know, to keep them on staff and keep, keep jobs going so they don't have to close during that period of time. So I'm just wondering, first of all, you know, so the arbitrary move from, to 3:00 to 8:00 seems like that was just a sort of feeling of how somebody might feel about that being a better, better way. And 2:00 to 6:00 being sort of post-lunch before, before dinner, and then the current 4:00 to 9:00. I'm just wondering where you feel, from the feedback you got from the community, where everyone stands on this? Because I guess the little bit I heard too was that restaurants in other communities don't have any requirements around happy hour, right? So they can do their own happy hours promotional events, that kind of thing without restriction. Is that right? I mean, what was the feedback from the community on that?
Yeah, so I heard from, I think it was two restaurant owners, local restaurant owners, who felt that having, allowing them to offer happy hour with an earlier start time would be beneficial to them. Of course, I've also heard from one citizen who's in the audience tonight, who doesn't think that happy hour should be made to, be allowed to start any earlier than it already does. The 4:00 to 9:00 timeframe that's currently on the books was enacted, adopted by a past council who had a lot of concerns about the consumption of alcohol in the city and the problems that overconsumption of alcohol can pose to the community. But, you know, this current council has directed staff to revisit the regulations. And so we got some feedback. We didn't get much feedback, but the feedback we did get, these amendments reflect that feedback from, from the business community who, who
Okay. And Hayward PD didn't have any issue with moving with whatever the happy hour time was?
Can you, I didn't catch that.
Did Hayward PD have any input on happy hour?
Oh, yes. Hayward PD was intimately involved in the crafting of all these amendments. And they didn't have any objections to do.
Okay. And then just really quick, going back to the, the split sort of restaurant bar ownership. What if, so if you have a restaurant or a bar and then the restaurant doesn't work out, that piece, and they close, now you just have a bar, what would happen in that scenario?
We're getting into more police question territory, I think. So if it's okay to have Detective Wright attempting to answer that question?
Yeah.
Because that question did come up at the Planning Commission meeting as well. It's a great
I'm also happy to, to answer that question, Councilmember Roach. So essentially, if you no longer have a restaurant component at a particular facility, and that is now just a bar, under the city's current regulations, a standalone bar requires a conditional use permit. So then we would require that establishment to come in and apply for the requisite conditional use permit.
Okay. And then what is the, I mean, what is the enforcement around this? I mean, I, you know, it seems like unless there's a problem at a restaurant, we're not, we don't know necessarily what's going on.
Correct. I mean, I, I think that given, you know, given the, the resources that we have on staff, I think we tend to deal with those on a complaint basis, as does regulatory authority like ABC. And we would work in partnership with them in enforcing not only their liquor license requirements, but as well as any of our local regulations surrounding alcohol establishments.
Okay. And then is the, is a bar permit, so they would have to get a new conditional use permit? Because now they're, now that's a different permit. Is that right?
Correct. Because a restaurant is not, a full-service restaurant by definition is not required to obtain a conditional use permit, but a, a bar or a nightclub by definition is required to have a conditional use permit in order to operate in the city.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. So the questions I have is, how many times, times did this go to Economic Development Committee? I know there was a lot of community outreach, but was it heard more than one occasion?
It went to the Council Economic Development Committee just one time.
Okay.
Back in September of last year. Yes.
Okay. And in terms of, you mentioned there was outreach specifically to business, individuals that hold business licenses in the city. Was that in a specific area or just citywide?
Citywide.
Okay.
The Economic Development Division maintains a list of all restaurants that, that we know of. And, and I used that list and sent, that list contains about 150, but several of them are like bakeries and ice cream parlors where there's obviously no alcohol being served. So, but I sent an email to all the restaurant owners of restaurants that have sit-down, you know, and alcohol, the ability to sell alcohol.
Okay. And I'm not sure if it's yourself or our Police Department that could answer this question, but in terms of securing an ABC license for a new business, help us understand that process. What does it entail in terms of a background check? Is that easy to complete? Or what's the timeline? Can you give us a sense of what a new business would have to face to secure that license?
Hey, Gabrielle, do you mind, do you have, are you comfortable answering that question? You probably
Yeah, I can definitely, I can answer it.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. So in order for a business to obtain an ABC license, they would want to get in contact with ABC, in which they will conduct their background check, and then they would notify the city that they are interested in opening a restaurant. As Sarah has pointed out, if it's a restaurant, they won't need to go through the conditional use permit process. And then I'm assuming that planning staff would be notified and they would notify us, in which we would do our due diligence and looking at that location and just checking everything with ABC.
Thank you. And in the last two years, based off your recollection, have we had to revoke or suspend anyone's license here in Hayward?
No, we have not had to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Councilmember Syrup.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Is there a grace period currently, let's say a food or the bar, the alcoholic component closes, and from what I understand, they need a conditional use permit? Is there a grace period that there, that's available to them to receive that?
I think that we did, oh, sorry, who was?
I was going to respond. I'm sorry, Steve.
No, no, no.
I was just going to say, Councilmember Syrup, we've not necessarily had that situation. But historically, when we've found properties out of compliance with city regulations, there's usually a time period that we allow them to come into compliance before there is follow-up enforcement action. So my gut tells me we would do the same here. We would provide them an opportunity to apply for that permit, but that does take some time. But I think we would work with an entity, if that was the case, to help them bring it, bring them into compliance as quickly as we could.
It's also important, if I can jump in, to note that if that were, if that scenario occurred, the, the license holder would actually be out of compliance with their ABC liquor license. So they wouldn't just be out of compliance with the city, they'd also be out of compliance with ABC, which is obviously not good for them. So they're going to make every effort, I would imagine, to try to bring in another food service provider.
Great. Thank you for that context. And then on the slide deck, it had mentioned that of the regulations of neighboring municipalities, none specifically allow partnerships wherein separate entities own food service and alcohol service components. I was curious, you know, the model that we're proposing tonight, if it's not in the region, is it being practiced elsewhere? I was just a little bit interested in, in the development of this approach.
You know, another person that we have on the call tonight is our Economic Development Manager, Paul Nguyen. And this is probably a great, yes, I see you, Paul. Please, please jump in. This is, this is your area of expertise, I think.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Paul Nguyen, Chief Economic Development Officer. To answer your question, absolutely. This is a modern concept, particularly in the microbrewery industry where you have a brewery entrepreneur who knows beer and the manufacturer of beer, but, but does not have any experience or expertise or any interest in food. And so you see these operations throughout the Bay Area, throughout California and across the country, where you'll have a microbrewer doing all the beer production, sales, and tasting elements, and they will partner with a separate entity, most often it's a food truck. A lot of these smaller microbreweries in industrial areas, you'll see food truck operations. But the more modern concept that we're seeing is that they partner with a bona fide restaurateur who operates a standalone kitchen. It's, it's the modern trend.
Great. Thank you, Paul. And it's good to see you on, on the line. I was curious if you could speak to how you imagine this, you know, more modern approach encouraging business development in Hayward?
Absolutely. I can give, I won't name any names, but I can tell you the, the lack of, the constraints of our existing regulation have precluded a number of microbreweries considering Hayward as their next home. And so the updating this, updating this alcohol beverage ordinance will give us equal footing with other communities, our neighboring communities, San Leandro, Union City, and things that don't have such stringent requirements. And then we're hoping to reengage the brewery community to, to attract this kind of business. So I see this as a, a step in the right direction and to give us equal footing to attract these type of businesses.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Goldstein.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Nguyen, do you have, do you have some businesses that are offering to come to Hayward with this change? Or is this all hypothetical?
At this point, we don't have businesses waiting in the wings telling us if you guys change this regulation, we'll come. As I said before, we've had a number of interested businesses come to Economic Development to help them select sites and understand our processes. And in those cases, I can name at least three cases where they dug into it and understood our regulations and said it was a barrier to their entry into our market.
Okay. All right. So at the very least, though, you have some contact with these folks that once we change these regulations, assuming that's the direction council wants to go today, you can at least reopen those conversations with those parties? Is that accurate?
Absolutely.
Okay. Very good. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And see, oh, are you asking me for one more question? Councilmember Roach may ask one more question. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to go back really quickly to this, to, you know, so it has to either be a full-service kitchen on the premises, or it says it can be a standalone attached to the ground, but it doesn't say on the premises standalone.
It absolutely, it should, it does.
Okay. All right. So maybe I just misread that.
It has to be on the same property. Yes, the same property.
Okay. I just wanted to get back to make sure this isn't going to be, you know, that people can sort of have off-site kitchens.
No, that's not our intention. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. That's it.
Thank you. Okay. So looking that there are no other questions, I will move now to public comments. And it looks like our first public comment is Peggy Guernsey.
Thank you very much again for your time. One of the items in changing the hours of happy hour One of the items in changing the hours of happy hour, it is, my understanding, this whole thing was only for the downtown restaurants with their bars, not all throughout the whole city or that. So my big concern is if you have this earlier happy hour, it's right at the time schools getting out in the downtown area, people crossing around the area. And now that I hear that it was set up by an older city council that, you know, didn't want to have a lot of drunk driving around or alcoholic problems and that sort of thing, it seems to me we haven't had the problems because we've had it at 60-40. I don't see why we have to encourage more drinking and alcohol in this city. If it's working fine, you know, having a restaurant and a bar. I do know, according to the things I've read and talking to Steve, that if a kitchen happens to close down, for whatever reason, that night, the bar has to close down at the same time. That's part of their permit or whatever. So, I mean, to me, I see that as a safety thing. Somebody wrote the rule to be that way. The other thing is, this thing about, we only had one, and it was a lounge owner. I've checked it, I've looked him up and everything else, and he's called a lounge owner that supported this happy hour. And his reasoning was so that our underpaid Hayward teachers could come in and afford to have, to buy their alcohol because they were so underpaid. And I so resent this man publicly calling out our teachers that way and using them as an excuse to have a reduced, or an earlier happy hour. I'm also aware that the CEDC members, our three of you, you former council members and that, and that you voted to support all this and send it to staff with an already positive attitude for changing it. I will also say that I've talked to Steve since September, and Steve hasn't, or Mr. Kowalski, excuse me, I'm sorry, never, to anything I can remember in my notes, and I didn't bring all of them tonight, told me that anybody with the chamber that they interviewed said that the stuff was too strict, that 60-40 was too strict, and the chamber did not support the 50-50. They didn't have any opinion, that everything was fine as it was. So they were not saying, yeah, go for 50-50. So please, please, I'm asking you, I'm begging you, leave it at 60-40. I know my time is up, but please, there's no good reason for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Guernsey. I'd like to now call Eric Yavorino. I think I pronounced your last name.
Yeah, getting closer.
Getting closer. I apologize.
Oh, yeah. Let me get a little bit. My name is Eric Yavorino. I'm the owner of the, the Dirty Bird Lounge, lounge owner. I also own a restaurant over in Alameda, which is a wine bar cocktail lounge, and a bar over in Oakland. I have 20 years of experience in this industry. And a lot of things have changed in the industry. For the most part, bars as they were, just serving drinks and no food is actually, I think, of the past. Going forward, almost, most bars that actually serve just drinks are now serving food with pop-ups. That happened with, that happened with COVID. The mandate when bars were able to reopen, they were only allowed to have pop-ups. That caught on, and now the, the market dictates that if we want to have a successful bar, you have to have a food. And also, what people don't realize is that all restaurants that are not, you know, fast food rely on alcohol sales to, for functioning. There is no restaurant that can afford to build, essentially, the tenant improvement of a kitchen is about roughly $200,000. The margins on food are roughly 10%. You, you, you can't make a restaurant without alcohol. That's just the fact of the matter is. You, you can debate if you like it or not, but you simply can't. The happy hour is, it, it's kind of obtuse in the way that, you know, we're not looking to sell $3 Jell-O shots or anything like that. But the fact of the matter is, it's, you know, it's a discount in a cocktail. A margarita instead of costing $9 costs $7. Irresponsible establishments will have dirt-cheap prices, and they'll pay for it because they'll have issues. But for the most part, if you're serving someone and you're, they're getting, you know, hammered, essentially, that's the issue with establishment, not necessarily with happy hour. And there's going to be bad players in any market. And again, if there's any other questions that, you know, you guys want to ask, I have years of experience. I'm not trying to be smug or anything like that, but I, you know, we're trying to be as, again, happy hour is not going to change anything for me. The 60-40, that number doesn't even really make much sense because no restaurant can actually make 60-40. They barely can make it 50-50, even like, you know, I don't want to put like, say Casa de Toro, amazing restaurant, he actually has high food prices. He also has high, you know, really expensive tequilas and mezcal's. He has a great establishment. That's a place that you want, but does he make 60-40? I'm not gonna like try and audit his books, but like, you know, great establishments like that probably can't make that number because it's impossible. And this, because the fact of the matter is, restaurants make their money on the alcohol in order for them to hire the great chefs to, to put these great programs together because otherwise you just can't have it. No one is going to pay, you know, $80 a plate. We're not going to be doing tasting menus in Hayward. But that's the really only way you can actually, you know, afford to actually have a restaurant. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And please don't leave the podium because you do have a question. Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I'm just gonna ask a general question because you do have experience, but just your experience in Hayward and in the region, in your opinion, what makes an effective restaurant business model? Like, what's the, the secret sauce, in your opinion? What, what are they doing right?
Hayward's interesting in the way it is the most diverse, one of the most diverse cities in the, in the country, in the way it's a mixing pot, a melting pot, I'm sorry. It's interesting. I found my success in making sure the dynamic of my establishment isn't, is to mix people together. You know, I can sit people at tables and they can confer with themselves, but when you have a group of people, they're a little bit more fluid in their movement, that's where you find success. Because, you know, again, like the, the hybrid model of just, not just being just a restaurant where you're just there for your, your, your click, but when you're kind of moving around and talking to people. I don't want to get on a soapbox and say this is that, but it, it creates a greater dialogue amongst people. And I think that's why I, I enjoy the, kind of the bar model, the bar, restaurant hybrid model, rather than just kind of the typical, you know, restaurant sit-down. But I think my success is more due to like, you know, being able to encourage people to intermingle.
What about management? What's your take on?
You know, I've been in the industry for a long time. I know a lot of ownership, they tend to think with their ego. And they, you know, there's always devices they get involved with. I picked really good people. A lot of my bartners and a lot of my management, they don't really drink that much. I don't drink that much, to be honest with you. I'm older and, you know, keep active. And they, again, you know, you just have to have, you know, people who kind of encourage a, a, you know, a cleaner model. Like, you know, if we, I find someone who is, you know, kind of an alcoholic and have an issue, we take them out of the bar. Because again, one bad apple will ruin the bunch. They could either be, you know, obnoxious, they can be drunk, they could be misogynistic, or, you know, they plain out have a, you know, a drinking problem, we try to get them out. And, you know, hopefully they find help. It's not, you know, my job to put someone in AA, but I do remove them from my premises if they become a problem.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. You didn't have a question, Councilmembers Zerminio, you wanted to. Okay. And then if you can come back, and Councilmembers Zerminio.
Eric, your thoughts on happy hour?
Happy hour, like, to be honest with you, it, the, happy hour, like, again, like, kind of putting a mandate on it, that was part of the temperance movement back with Sweeney. That didn't really make much sense, to be honest with you. The four to nine, that's kind of, kind of weird. And I think it really comes down to the establishment. If the establishment is running a, you know, a healthy establishment, they're not getting people roaring drunk. You know, people are gonna, you know, drink to excess if they're, you know, gonna drink to excess. They're gonna, like, you know, if someone is trying to drink for the cheapest amount possible, they're going to a liquor store. They're not really in, you know, they're drinking in the parking lot. We have people drinking in the parking lots all the time, you know, we can do about it. But, you know, subsidizing, you know, spirit sales isn't, you know, isn't gonna, you know, be the main issue. The main issue is just over serving a person. And, you know, making sure that, you know, people are kind of drinking in a responsible manner, that's what we should be looking at, not really kind of try and, you know, place it with, you know, we should do this hour, this hour. Because a problem, a problem person is going to be a problem person at, you know, any hour of the day.
I've always seen it as a spring vacation, spring break type of thing, the, the happy hour, when you're off in Cancun or you're off in Florida, you need that extra drink. But I go to restaurants here and the happy hour, you want two beers for one? No, I just want one beer. I don't want two beers or one margarita.
Yeah, two beers for one does, actually doesn't make much sense. I, I personally wouldn't do that at all.
Yeah, if it's a party atmosphere, it's different. Okay, well, thank you. And I do have a comment later on.
Okay, thank you. And then we have another question. Eric, you're not. Oh, okay. You may, you are excused. Councilmember Andrews for Sergeant Wright.
Sergeant Wright, I'm just curious, do you know the percentage roughly of how many people are arrested for being illiberated or any issue, alcohol-related issues when it comes to liquor stores versus restaurants? Because from the presentation, it sounds like it was zero, but can you elaborate more?
Hi. I actually don't have that data broken down. The only data that we were able to pull is how many people are arrested for being drunk in public. So for instance, so for the year 2022, and this is the partial data, because when we did pull this, we hadn't completed 2022, so this was from January 1st up until December 12th, 155 people had been arrested for drunk in public, and about 21 of those had occurred in the downtown reporting district.
So where are they, where are you finding the 134 people?
That would be throughout the city of Hayward, so we would have to look at the reporting districts, we would have to look exactly where else. I only have the top one, which is the downtown, and then it looked like just next to it would be nine arrests.
And then what, what happens if, if an establishment is, you're seeing too many liberated people come out, drunk and arrests outside of establishment? Can you tell me what happens?
Yeah, absolutely. So that establishment would be considered a disorderly establishment, and generally, it's going to be our patrol officers that are making this arrest. So if they're finding that there are a lot of intoxicated people coming out of, whether it's a restaurant or a bar, they're generally going to notify our unit, in which we will work closely with ABC. We are going to go talk with the owner, we're going to try to figure out what is going on, what hours is this occurring, and try to see if we could come up with some sort of solution to fix this issue.
And worst-case scenario?
Their license could potentially be revoked, and that's something that is from ABC. I think on our side of things, if we find that they're, you know, contributing to a lot of crime in the area, or we're, they're considered a public nuisance, we can go that route of revocation as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember, I closed public comments, right? So, okay, good. All right. So Councilmembers Zerminio.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you very much for the report. Thank you, Sarah, and thank you, Detective Wright? Right? Okay. A very good report. On a personal note, my mother had a restaurant and bar for 25 years, and wife and I worked there for a while. And she was very successful for three reasons. Her great cooking, the loyalty that she had to her customers and customers to her, and beer sales. And I think that's important. We, that actually meant that whenever she saw a customer having too much, she would call a taxi or she would have a friend drive the customer home. That's extremely important. I really have not seen any problems with overconsumption of alcohol in Hayward. The last time we did anything drastic was back then, I guess, 2000, when we closed Gumbalas. I don't know if you all remember Gumbalas? That was famous. They gave alcohol consumption a bad name, and we put a stop sign right away. So, so, so social drinking is something that's important to many of us, and of course, we do have folks who do not drink at all. I have a son and a daughter who do not touch alcohol whatsoever. But social drinking is important. I believe that this particular ordinance and these changes will benefit the city of Hayward because it will allow for more businesses to come over. The idea of having a microbrewery next to Bank of the West on B Street and a lot that's been empty since, God, since 1960, when the building burned down, I think, it's going to be tremendous. The thought is having a couple of containers, one would be a microbrewery and the other one would be a kitchen. That's tremendous for an empty lot that's been there for the ages. The, the changes that are made, I think, are fine. I'm going to make one recommendation, but that's, that's going to have to be acted upon today. Maybe that you all can look at the need for happy hour, you know, do a poll. I really don't think that it's needed, but in this particular case, it's too late. I like the three to eight. The thought, the idea of adding language that would help our business owners tell the residents, you, this is how you can get home safely. I mean, that's extremely important for public safety, for their sake and for the sake of somebody out on the street. 50-50 is fine. So with that in mind, I move on the recommendation of our staff, and thank you.
Thank you. Item's been moved by Councilmember Zerminio.
Am I able to second with an amendment?
You, you, you can second, yes.
May I second with an amendment?
Yes. If, yeah, if the maker.
If it's accepted. Can I second, then give comment about my amendment and see if my fellow colleague accepts? Okay, so I'll second the motion for the sake of discussion.
And seconded by Councilmember Cyrop.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmembers Zerminio. I agree with many of the points that my colleague made. I think that three to eight for happy hour sounds reasonable to me as well. I think it's important to consider that there are schools in the area. We do have a responsibility to make sure that we're balancing the needs of our youth with the needs of our older generations. One thing I want to communicate is that I see this as an incredibly innovative proposal. I think a lot of council members here support the idea of a business incubator, and what's being proposed here, I think, allows the room for several small businesses to develop themselves, especially at a time when business rents are so high. And so I think this is a really imaginative way of allowing small businesses to begin getting their foot in the door and building up a name for themselves. I want to thank the Planning Department, HPD, and the Econ Development Department for putting together this resolution. And I think one other thing I want to note is that third spaces are so important. There's a social aspect to, to gathering, like you mentioned, Councilmember. We go to work, we go home to sleep, but we need a place to socialize, be human, and enjoy a quality of life. And I think that restaurants and bars facilitate a lot of that for folks that are over 21 and of drinking age. The amendment that I'd like to propose here is that I actually was quite surprised to hear two things. One, the 60-40 is, is ultimately meaningless because it's almost unattainable by most restaurants already. So maintaining something that isn't even possible is, is, it just feels like if we're going to have an ordinance, it needs to be realistic. But the second is that nobody else in the region is imposing any kind of ratio whatsoever. And I'd like to create more space to facilitate the development of smaller restaurants that partner with bars. And so my, my amendment is to remove the ratio, actually. I'd like to be in line with many of the other cities in the region. I like everything else about the amendment, but I think the 50-50, if no one else is doing it and their business scene is succeeding, I want to support our small businesses downtown too. So if you're open to that amendment, that's what I'd like to add. Just no ratio. Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, so moved by Councilmembers Zerminio, seconded by Councilmember Cyrop with the amendment to remove the 50-50, or to remove ratios, food to, and a food to liquor ratio. And I do see Planner Kowalski with his hand up. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, Ms. Guernsey earlier in the evening suggested that these amendments only apply to the downtown restaurants. That is not the case, and Councilmember Cyrop just said something along, in a similar vein. I just wanted to make it clear. These, these new regulations would apply to all restaurants, whether they're on Tennyson or on B Street or on, you know, Foothill or Mission. So.
So just want to make sure everybody understood.
Thank you. And I just caught the eye of councilmembers Zerminio and councilmember Cyrup, and they understand that absolutely. Okay, councilmember Roach.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to the amendments because I do think they're probably pretty innocuous to current establishments. And this is a sort of innovative way to bring, to spur economic development downtown. So I appreciate that. I have a little bit of concern about the amendment only because I appreciate why it would help us, you know, spur even more innovation and economic development downtown. But I guess I want to ask staff about this because I would, I would be concerned about current operators that are doing their best to meet this ratio. And we're just going to remove it. I just wonder, would that amendment need a little bit more exploring before we, you know, potentially disrupt something else with current establishments?
Well, I'll just say that ABC requirements for full-service restaurants already require the 50-50 requirement. It's just, we have the added layer of having it in the city's ordinance as well. So even if the council decided to remove the ratio from the city's ordinance, they would still have to comply with the ABC ordinance or regulations, which requires 50-50 for full-service restaurants. So it's just ours, our ordinance creates that additional layer of responsibility and burden on restaurants that may be a deterrent to so many businesses.
Okay. And my understanding was that it was a, I thought Mr. Kowalski stated it as a tradition with ABC, not an actual requirement. Is that true?
That is actually correct. So historically, ABC used to have it. I think it was on their books, 50-50 ratio. But they have since done away with that. It's been several years since they stopped enforcing a 50-50 ratio.
So if we remove the 50-50, we're establishing a new way of having a bar. That's what I'm concerned about.
It's a valid concern. It's one that the council should.
What was the question again?
I'm concerned that if we remove the 50-50, we're establishing a new way of having a bar because now you're removing any requirement for food. So you're basically opening up an ability to have a bar. So I would be a little concerned. I appreciate the reason behind it, but I, I would actually want a little more input from the community on that amendment before I would be okay with voting for that amendment because, because of this. And is what you're saying too, Mr. Kowalski, that it does, it does open it up to anyone can be a bar.
Actually, if I might just interject and just say that, you know, these establishments have to obtain certain types of liquor licenses from ABC. And the licenses in question are the ones that are tied to being defined as a bona fide eating place, which is separate from a different type of license that would be given to a bar, which would then need to follow through our typical process of a conditional use permit. This is a ratio that was in our ordinance that is only applicable to full-service restaurants as they're defined. It is not applicable to bars and restaurant or to standalone bars or nightclubs.
So if that, so you could still, right, be a full service. And our current ratio says 50-50. But if we remove the 50-50, you could be a restaurant, close your restaurant at 6 o'clock and just be a bar for the rest of the night?
No. In that scenario, we wouldn't view them as a full-service restaurant because the other requirements are that they serve food the entire time, that they're serving alcohol. So that would be in violation of our definition of a full-service restaurant in the ordinance.
Okay, but they could still serve like, say, 10% food and whatever.
No, they need to actually serve an actual meal. So you can't just, you know, serve steak and pork chops up until 6:00 and then, you know, from 7:00 on, serve, you know, french fries and a, and a basket of peanuts. That would not meet the definition of a restaurant. And in that scenario, that would require a conditional use permit because it's operating more like a standalone bar or nightclub.
And then what would be your opinion about what the current establishments, what would they have to say about this, given that they've been working hard to try to meet this ratio?
I'm not sure I follow your question. I'm sorry, councilmember.
Well, I'm just, I'm wondering, you know, just, you know, so you have restaurants that are trying to meet this requirement, the current 60-40, and maybe, you know, it's, we put it at 50-50. But what does that do to their sort of like meeting requirement? Now we all of a sudden say, no more requirement, it's all gone. What, I'm just wondering what the community would, how they would react to that? And what, what different, would that change how they do business? Does any, I mean, maybe Paul can answer that or Stephen.
I don't know that Mr. Yeverino would breathe, a lot of them would probably breathe a sigh of relief. But they would continue because they have to, under their liquor license, continue to be a restaurant and offer food service all the way up till 30 minutes prior to closing time. But Mr. Yeverino told me, when I first interviewed him last summer, that it would be great if the city did away with the ratio altogether. So incidentally, I wanted to make that.
Okay, I guess maybe I want to hear a little more discussion on it. But I, you know, I'm not, so far, I'm not in support of the amendment, but I am in support of the motion.
Councilmember Andrews. Oh, okay, okay. Oh, she, yeah, there you go. Go ahead.
Just, I was, in the presentation, it did mention the CEDC recommendation for more information about how to provide options for more driving safely from, you know, back to your home or giving options about that with a QR code or something like that. So I didn't really hear that in the presentation. Just wanted to make sure that, you know, that is going to be discussed further. How does that work with this amendment?
That was included in the amendments. Sorry, sorry.
I was just going to say, do we want to have something in the amendment? Can we ask establishments to provide ways you can get home safely as part of this?
We left it kind of vague in the, in the language in the amendments. Detective Wright, I know, can probably chime in here as well because it will be up to the chief of police how, how we roll out that type of a program. But it is included in the amendment.
And I would just caution against putting any specific language in the ordinance other than asking the police chief to determine how the program would be rolled out because transportation methods may change. We may not, you know, you don't always, and that's the thing is then you'd have to amend the ordinance to, because otherwise, businesses would be providing information that's out of date. So I would say, I think the way that we have it in the ordinance is the police chief will develop what that program looks like and work with the restaurants to implement it. And that's, I would recommend that we keep it that way so that it gives the flexibility.
Okay. And is there a way I can make a comment now? Or do you have to wait?
No, you can make a comment.
Okay. I just want to, I want to thank both the attendees for coming out tonight. I know this is a very important issue. And I know there's a lot of passion on both sides of this issue. And just want to acknowledge all the advocacy that you've done, Ms. Guernsey, on this. And I know if you could see some of the breweries that are out there, I think you would be actually surprised to see what breweries are doing now. People are throwing baby showers there. They're bringing their dogs there. It's not, it's not what you think it is at all these locations. You've seen it, yeah.
Just a point of order, we cannot go back and forth.
Okay, I just wanted, just wanted to acknowledge, you know, your advocacy and just to let you know that the model is changing of how food services. And I do agree with councilmember Cyrup that it's very hard, as we heard for weeks and weeks, for restaurants to get started. And this provides an avenue for folks who want to do food, but know that it's very difficult to start a restaurant. It's very expensive. The success rate is very low. And this provides them the opportunity to practice their craft and establish themselves and bring new businesses to Hayward. And, you know, I really, really support any kind of innovative thinking when it comes to economic development. And I, I'm. Understood. Okay, we understand it.
Go ahead.
Okay, so. Okay.
Go ahead.
So that's, that's all I want to say.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, the Z. Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. A lot of thoughts. I'll try to be concise. So I apologize that I'm looking at my phone, but this is how government works. We are getting emails right now about this. There's an ask to table this. So just to be open and transparent, I think there's a lot of confusion in the public. So this is sent from someone who is very involved with our chamber, is a local operator. Obviously, I can't speak to in detail their request, but it is a request we just got. So I'm going to support the original motion. I don't support the amendment based off the fact that we already have concerns about the process transparency. I'm not comfortable adopting something that I feel is a substantial change. It's not aligned with what was published in our report. If that's something we want to revisit at a later date, I think that's fair and reasonable. I wish I knew the concerns of others that are emailing us now, but it's a little bit too late. So I just want to encourage everyone. We're all busy. We've got a lot going on in our, in our lives. But we all also have to be responsible and subscribe to the agendas, the information. It's standard knowledge that our agendas are published Thursday, Friday, before every Tuesday. So unfortunately, we are in this predicament. But I think the information that is published and widely known based off all the outreach, I'm comfortable with voting on accepting staff's recommendation and not making any changes at this time. If the concerns are substantial by the people that have just emailed us, we can have a later conversation. Hopefully, we could bring them into the discussion. But it's kind of late to make that request at 8:00 something at night when this has been agendized and published since last week. So I'll be happy to support the original motion. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Goldstein.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I concur with councilmember Marquez. I think we go through great pains to publish exactly what our decisions are going to be, what, what we're hoping to accomplish. And I think making a, I think it's a big change. Suddenly, at the last second, I think does a disservice to our community. I don't think that there's anything substantive to be gained by making that change and probably nothing substantive to be lost either, except insofar as how we communicate to the public. And I would, I would hope that you stand with me when I say that I am all for open and transparent governance. I think it's really important that people know what decisions we're about to make. And I think, I think, like I said, making that change at the last second, I think does a disservice to that commitment. I do appreciate our public speakers today who stand up for safety around our schools and in our downtowns and in the city generally. You know, I've, people who know me well know that I lost my wife to alcoholism, and it was a terrible, shocking experience. And I would not ever wish that on anybody. But that's a disease. That's not a fault of the business. And I think when we have good business people in the community, I think it speaks volumes to what we can accomplish here in town. And as my colleague, councilmember Cyrup, said, we need places to just, paraphrasing, hang out, get to know each other, spend some time, be community, have some fun. And if our business development experts are telling us that potential new businesses are saying, yeah, we like Hayward, we're considering Hayward, but, you know, you're making it impossible for us to come here. I think we do need to make that change. And again, talking about the responsible business owners like Mr. Yeverino and others here in town, I think we do open the possibility for them to be more successful. And on the campaign trail, I said that I want to see that happen. I want to see our businesses be successful so that they see Hayward as a place to come, a place to open a business or expand a business. And let's face it, those taxes, the sales taxes that generate from that help us pay the bills to hire the people that, that we need at all staffing levels in the city. There's a lot of good reasons why we need to support business generally. And this is, I think, a very positive step forward that we can take for our business community. So I'm in favor of it, but not in favor of the amendment.
Okay, thank you. Before I call on councilmember Roach for a moment, I'd like to ask the city attorney, our senior city, our senior assistant city attorney, Michael Vehilia, about if we voted on this, because we do have a motion, we do have a second, and it dies, and it fails, can we reintroduce the original staff report and vote it, and vote on it again? Or do we need to remove, you know, if we wanted to get consensus, do we need to remove the, the amendment made by councilmember Cyrup?
So, Mr. Mayor, as I understand it, there's been a motion with a second and a friendly amendment. And that's what's before the council now. If you proceed to a vote and it fails, then it would be open to a, to a new motion, which could include moving the staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so before I proceed, I see we have councilmember Roach who wants to make one more.
I was just going to make the suggestion that you, that we vote separately on the amendment since there's a first and a second. Can we separate the amendment from the motion?
Mr. Vehilia?
We can't do that.
Can we, can we take a, let's say we voted on the staff report and then had a separate vote on the amendment?
Well, first the amendment and then, okay. All right.
Okay, so let me, let me back up. We have a motion. We have a second with an amendment. And so the question is, do we vote for the amendment first or second? The councilmember Zerminio.
The easiest way would be for the maker of the friendly amendment to remove the friendly amendment. And of course, that would be fine with me. And then we go back to the original recommendation of the staff recommendation. And thank you, colleague Goldstein and Andrews and Marquez, for those were good comments. So I think, so colleague Cyrup?
Before you say something, and before that, let me make a comment. Because I haven't said something yet. So I like to make a, first of all, I want to thank everybody for, for speaking on this. And, you know, Ms. Guernsey, you know, you and I personally have been talking about this for a very long time. And you and I have been talking about other topics and, and you know my position on a lot of other things. And, and I think, and, you know, I have to, you know, on one hand, I have to agree with councilmember Andrews around, you know, really looking at today, this moment in history as a time where we really have to be innovative and we really have to be thinking about economic development in these new creative ways. You know, you know, you brought up sort of the, the, sort of the new, you know, this new age of breweries and restaurants. And, you know, this past summer, for whatever it's worth, you know, I took a drive with some friends down to the central coast. And, you know, San Luis Obispo and Lompoc and, I mean, Santa Maria and Santa Barbara. The restaurant, bless you. The restaurant scene, the food scene is completely, completely different, you know? And, you know, this, this concept of full-service restaurant, And, you know, this, this concept of full-service restaurant, you know, you walk in and you have, you know, food and bar and, you know, all of that is completely redefined today. And I think what we're doing tonight is doing the Hayward's version of sort of redefining this landscape. The fact that we're decoupling food from liquor and being able to have two separate entities in one building to do this kind of thing, this is a, I mean, for us and here in Hayward, this is completely different, radically different. And I think it's great. A lot of other restaurants are doing this, and a lot of other cities are doing this. And so, you know, I, I, you know, we're now in the sort of post-pandemic, dare I say it that way, we're in this new space, this new environment today, that we need to give every opportunity for business owners, for restaurateurs, for these entrepreneurs to come in and establish restaurants. At the same time, conversely, our existing restaurant owners, giving them the, the creative space to figure out new and innovative ways. You know, we have a, you know, one of the things that Councilmember Andrews has facilitated over the last several months is this, you know, sort of this new Arthur Mack concept. And, you know, I don't, I don't know if I'm being a spoiler alert here, but this little nook in between Buffalo Bills and, or the, the Masonic Building and the bank, that whole space is going to be completely redefined, completely reconfigured, and, and it's going to be all outdoors, you know? I mean, and so, anyway, I, you know, when, when I, I've been up here long enough to see a lot of different reiterations of the liquor ordinance and the, and the cab, you know, we haven't even gotten to the cabaret license. I mean, you know, the irony in all of this, we were talking about this earlier, the irony in all this is that you could be in downtown and, you know, you could be having a drink, but if you shake a leg, you're out of compliance, you know? And so it's, you know, we have, we as a city have a long way to go to catch up to, you know, the rest of the state, the rest of society, you know, in some cases, in some cases. But anyways, I don't want to, you know, sort of overhype this, but I, you know, I do think that, you know, you know, removing the ratio, you know, they already, two things. One, ABC already has a 50-50 ratio that they're going to have to obey in the first place. I mean, it's already there, right? And, and I heard Councilmember Roach about your concerns about what will happen, you know, tomorrow or in the, in the short future, will restaurants completely, you know, redefine what they do and start to find loopholes in this? And from what I'm hearing from staff and particularly from Director Bowser, is that this doesn't, you know, restaurant owners, they still have to follow the rules set forth by their permit as a restaurant, as their conditional use permit. And, you know, I don't, I'm not gonna, we're not going to see Casa del Toro tomorrow stop serving, you know, pork chops, you know, at, you know, four o'clock and then liquor, you know, from that on. They have a stake to follow the rules, not only within their CUP, their conditional use permit, but also their ABC license. And I should also say that, you know, I've been up here long enough to know that these ratios are completely arbitrarily imposed. I mean, we came up with this number. We did it up here. And, and so the fact that the 50-50 ratio is, it's already set forth by the state, it's a state standard, it's a standard that other cities are following, I, I'm pretty comfortable with this, and so I'm going to be voting yes for this. And so what I'd like to do is, I think there's, I'd like for us to be unanimous in this. I'd like for us to see if we can get this over the finish line by, by unanimous vote. If it doesn't, if it fails, then we can come back and vote on it again. But I wanted to thank everybody on their comments, and I'd like the city manager, or the city attorney, or the city clerk, Councilmember Zermeño, before I-
Before we vote, colleague Cyrop, I invite you to do, to take away the friendly amendment.
I appreciate the request. I still insist on putting it forward because I, the way I feel about this is I want to give what I think is, or are Hayward businesses' best chance at not just surviving but thriving, being able to get a foothold and thrive. And I, you know, if it fails, it fails, and we'll vote on it without the amendment, and that's okay with me too. But I genuinely believe, and the reason why I want to keep it here is that this enables more businesses to succeed. And I just want to add one more small comment. My colleague Councilmember Goldstein said, this is about public transparency. We are the public transparency. I never saw this ordinance because I wasn't on council while it was being developed. And so I've been elected to represent the interests that care about me having a seat here, and it's my obligation to weigh in and make adjustments as necessary. So I just want to say that this is me being transparent. This is the first time I've been able to engage with this, and so I'm weighing in on it the way I think voters expect me to. So I just wanted to clarify that. So I would like to keep the amendment intact, and if it fails, it fails, but obviously I'll-
All right. All right, so that means that I do not accept the friendly amendment, and as the maker of the motion, I do not accept it.
Okay.
So that means it will not be included in the motion.
Okay. And then, I guess-
So do you want to, you want to continue to be the second, or, or I can, we can find someone else to second the motion?
Sure. I mean, I could also put forward a substitute motion, but it didn't seem like the votes are here, so.
Okay. So there's no friendly amendment to the motion. And staff, is there a possibility that within the next year, maybe you can study no ratio and no happy hour, and then come back to us later on?
I'm just going to politely say no. We, we have spent the last year and a half working on this, and, you know, if, if the council wants us to, wants to direct us to do that, we will put forward what isn't going to happen. We've got to do the sidewalk vendor ordinance, we've got the street vendor ordinance, we've got affordable housing ordinance changes.
No rush.
Yeah, so I, I, there's just a lot on the plate that has been waiting for this project to finish, so staff can do other things. So I would just suggest that if the council chooses to move forward this evening, great. If not, we can go back and work on some other things, but we would need council direction to do that.
So put it in the to-do list. So again, the motion is completed, he has seconded, so we're fine.
So moves by Councilmembers, so the motion is staff report, no amendment, the staff recommendation, seconded, moved by Councilmembers Zermeño, seconded by Councilmember Cyrop. Madam City Clerk-
There, there's no second, someone else will have to second it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So you, we need a new second it, we need someone, so-
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Goldstein. Madam City Clerk, please take your role.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So this is the motion per the staff recommendation.
Motion per staff recommendation, moved by Councilmember Zermeño, seconded by Councilmember Goldstein.
Thank you. Councilmember Andrews?
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein?
Aye.
Councilmember Marquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Roach?
Yes.
Councilmember Cyrop?
Yes.
Councilmember Zermeño?
Chief.
Mayor Salinas?
Yes. Unanimously passes. Okay, thank you. All right. Moving on to legislative business, seven, item number seven, LB23-011, fiscal year 2023 mid-year budget, adopt a resolution approving fiscal year 2023 mid-year budget update and five-year general fund update. And this report is coming to us by way of Finance Director Nicole Gonzalez.
Can, can you hear, okay, perfect. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council, Nicole Gonzalez, I'm the Director of Finance. This evening, I'll be presenting the fiscal year 2023 mid-year budget review, as well as an up-to-date to the five-year general fund financial model. So this slide here is a kind of overall summary of the general fund proposed requests related to expenditures. The top part of the slide here shows previously approved council appropriations of a total of $4.5 million. The majority of this previously approved appropriations are related to employee contract terms, specifically related to the unrepresentative staff, HPOA and local 1909, and then the remainder are all related to appropriations of grants received from the city. The bottom half of the presentation here, you can see are the proposed mid-year changes. So these are new changes. One-time expenditure requests total about $1 million, and then there are additional requests for transfers from the general fund to other funds, so other funds that provide services and projects, such as facilities, fleets, water, things like that, those are a total of about 1.5. So a total proposed new budget request at mid-year totals 2.5 million. So the total change to the general fund at mid-year totals 7.04. So this slide is a little different from the slide you just saw. This also includes changes to revenue. I just want to highlight here that this is not a review of every single revenue source that we have, this is just a review of projected changes. And so there are a few changes to our projected revenue, the first being an projected increase of 1.6 million in property tax, $1 million increase in utility user tax, and then there is a previously approved council transfer in, which was 5.9 million, so a total change to the general fund revenue projection of 8.5. And just to provide a little context with that 5.9, for those who were not on council when this was approved back in August, this was a transfer from the city's workers' compensation fund. Several years ago, the workers' compensation fund was severely underfunded, and in a way, to, to bring that up to appropriate funding levels, we did apply an additional percentage to our regular workers' compensation rate. And so that should have ceased at a certain year in prior fiscal years, and it had not. And so this is actually more in line with a reimbursement to the general fund for overfunding the workers' compensation. So this is a one-time transfer. Again, looking at the expenditures, we have a total change in expenditures of just over 7 million. Again, you can see the previously approved appropriations related to contract terms was just under $4 million. Some of the new requests related to mayor and city councils, a $10,000 ask, that's related to furniture expenses, as well as transitional expenses with the new council and mayor. Contract services, $57,000, that's related to the 360 evaluations for the appointed officers for the city manager, city clerk, and city attorney's office, excuse me, city attorney, as well as language assessment contract services. And then there was the one-time election costs in the city clerk's office, which is an estimated total of $400,000. And then in development services, an appropriation of previously collected revenue through permits, and so this is $500,000 to perform plan check services and inspection services for those already collected revenue related to permits. And then library services, they have an increase of $35,000, and that's related to an increase in security services at the downtown library and the branch library to expand security hours. And then again, we have the transfer out of $1.5 million to support other funds. And then previously appropriated, as we discussed, the just under $600,000, and that was related to appropriation of grants. So at the adopted fiscal year 2023, we had projected building the general fund reserves by about 4.5 million, with the adjustment to the revenue, projected revenues, also considering the additional expenditure changes for fiscal year 2023, we actually are projecting to build reserves by about 5.9 million. So some of the council member and, and mayor are familiar with, with this table here. This is a five-year outlook for the general fund. The top line here shows revenue projections, followed by expenditure projections, and then the change in the need for the use of general fund reserves or surplus in reserves. As you can see, in fiscal year 2023, with a revised budget, if mid-year changes are approved, as presented this evening, we, again, will build that reserve by about 5.9 million, with an ending balance in the general fund reserves of about 47.3 million. As you can see in our years, we're showing significant projected deficits or shortfalls in the general fund, where we are outpacing our, our expenditures are outpacing our revenues. This is not uncommon from what we've seen in the past. We have never brought a budget to, to council which showed a use of reserves at this level. We've always continued to work through the budget process each year to, to minimize the impact to the general fund reserve, and I would expect that when we present the fiscal year 2024 budget in May to you, that that number will be a, a different number. But just noting that we do recognize that there is a significant shortfall projected, and that each year, we continue to bring that down. So switching gears slightly, this is a little bit of a summarization of the other funds in which I was referring to. That top table of the, top portion of the blue table are previously appropriated funds that were approved by council. Those include 10.3 million. And other funds, we do keep separate and show separately the Measure C, which were previously approved appropriations of about 56,000, and that was related to the employee costs terms in their labor negotiations. The second part of the blue chart shows the proposed new budget requests totaling 2.7, 2.8 million, so 2.7 are new for all other funds. New requests for Measure C is 58,000. So the total other fund expenses for mid-year is 13.2 million. The yellow chart is the summarization of CIP fund changes. Again, you'll see the previously appropriated, approved by council was 8.1 million, and new requests total about 609,000, so a total change in all CIP funds of about 8.7 million. Just wanted to give a kind of a high-level overview of changes that we're seeing in the ARPA expenditure plan. For, for all of you that are aware, the city did receive 38.378 million in ARPA revenue, or I should say, ARPA expenditure plan. And so the total budget, as you can see here, was distributed based on recommendations and approval by council into four categories, the first being supporting public health expenditures, including capitalizing investments in public facilities, addressing negative impacts, economic impacts related to the pandemic, replacement of lost public sector revenue, and then also investment into water and sewer and broadband infrastructure, sorry. And so that, this kind of gives you an idea of what the total was. In fiscal year 2022, we spent about 12 million of that 38 million. Fiscal year '23 revised includes the appropriation plus any unspent funds that were originally appropriated in fiscal year '22. So those funds rolled over into fiscal year '23 for a revised budget of 23.3 million. And we are projecting fiscal year 2024 appropriations to be just over $3 million. And this is, like I said, very high-level summary. I would suspect that in the fiscal year 2024, we will provide a much more detailed update on where we are with these funds and project statuses within each of these budget categories. With that, the recommendation this evening is for, one, the council to review the fiscal year '23 mid-year budget report, adopt a resolution providing amendments to the previously adopted city council budget, excuse me, City of Hayward fiscal year 2023 operating budget, and then adopting a resolution providing amendments to the previously approved City of Hayward fiscal year 2023 capital improvement program budget.
Director Gonzalez, thank you. I cannot express to you how grateful everyone here is, the fact that you made six slides to put this together.
We try and keep it brief.
Your, your mentor and your teacher is probably very proud of you.
Concise and thorough, though.
Okay. Councilmember, I believe we had Councilmembers Zermeño.
Thank you very much for the report, good, good report, good numbers. A little more, I'm just a little confused as to why from '23 to '24, we have an 8 million drop in revenues, but then it picks up in '25, '26. What's, what happens next year?
Sure, absolutely. So fiscal year '23 does include the one-time ARPA transfer to the general fund to, it was 7.2 million to five. We collect, we had that transfer from ARPA into general fund in fiscal year '22 and ' '23, so for a total of 14.5 million, so those were one-time. And so that's why you see that drop off in '24, because that is removed.
Yeah.
And then we start to kind of normalize after that.
And then it goes. And my next question is for our city manager. Any, what would we have to do to start using or putting away some Measure C funds for a possible future police new building?
So currently, there's not, and I would, given that the Measure C expires in 2034, we probably would not be able to collect enough revenue in that timeframe to fund a police building. I think we are using some Measure C funds to do some of the initial design work, the conceptual thinking, and I think probably we will be coming back to the Council Budget and Finance Committee in the near term with, because the council had asked us to explore what, what do we do with the police building, so we- So we are internally discussing some options, and we'll be bringing those options to the council budget and finance committee for discussion, and then come back to council. So we're thinking about it, we have some ideas, and so those should be forthcoming to budget and finance.
I just thought that maybe there were some funds from Measure C that we could start putting away in a piggy bank for an eventual possible new building.
We, you know, we are not spending all of the dollars every year, so it's accruing a fund balance, so we can put those dollars towards a future police building if that is where the council chooses to put the money.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Natalie, thank you, city manager.
Mayor Protem Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. I did write the word "brief," and I know Dustin, I mean, Assistant Manager Clausen, I'm sure you helped out a lot with making sure that message got delivered, and that message is delivered to all the departments, not just finance, so just putting it out there, yeah. So I just, I wanted to see how Measure T actually impacts this, does it impact this at all?
There were, oh, I wasn't sure if I was on, sorry. Measure T for the real property transfer tax, there was not a projected change at mid-year, so it remains at the estimated adopted budget.
Okay, great. And have we discussed what are some other ways? I mean, we just, you know, changed our license here for alcohol, but are we discussing other ways we can bring in more revenue?
You know, I think that there, you know, we're always having conversations, like I said, as we work through the fiscal year budget each year. We are looking at our current revenue sources, if there are opportunities for us to look at, you know, business license taxes. I mean, we've spent several years back in 2017 really working through some of the changes that we could, you know, make to, you know, to revenue projections specifically related to real property transfer tax, transit occupancy tax. That is an opportunity to look at, so that was approved by the voters, and we have not adjusted that transit occupancy tax, it's still at its current rate. But we do have, I think when it went to the voters, it was an approved for an up-to amount. So the council budget finance committee, which really where all of the previously council and previous mayor were on, did receive a report on that back in October, and so it's probably an item we'll bring forward to the new committee and to council on whether or not we want to look to increase that tax.
Okay. And if we're looking at that, I just read a report about hotels not doing well, so are we going to look at something else?
Sure. We can absolutely look at other ways, and that was something that we did bring to the committee was an analysis of what type of revenue projections it would look like if we set it at 10% or 12%, what those would look like, but also taking into consideration the impact to the hotels.
And I would just add, council members, Director Gonzalez has entered into a new contract to basically go back and take a look at our financial model that we redid in, I think it was 2016, and basically kind of just make sure, you know, have that consulting firm, they were the ones who helped us with it originally, but just like update it, like there's some, you know, let's go through it just line by line with the consulting firm. And I think we may, you know, like we did in 2016, bring that to the council in a special work session where it was more hands-on, you all get to play with the model to kind of see the impact, and then we can talk about, as part of that work session, what are some, you know, what are the strategies that we really want to focus on for the council to focus on over the next couple of years.
Okay, thank you.
Council member Cyrop.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for the presentation. I was curious about just Measure C operating expenditures for the next 10 years, so it seems like we've gotten the majority of our capital improvement projects out of the way. I looked back at the 2014 documents and the agreements that council put together when Measure C was put on the ballot. A lot of it was allocating, I think, about 2.6 million a year for police expenses, adjusted for inflation, so I was just kind of curious about the numbers that go up as it relates to police operating expenses, what you anticipate the maintenance expenses being, and then when it says other departments, you know, what do you mean by that as well?
So we build in an escalation factor, I want to say of about 7% each year, so that accounts for any, there are some positions within that, both of Measure C for police as well as Measure C for public, or for maintenance services, and so those account for any employee-related expense increases, benefits, medical, as well as any COLAs. And then, of course, as different contract needs come up as well, so that's what's kind of in that. The other funds are transfers to, specifically related to the unfunded liabilities for OPEB, we make additional contributions, and so that additional contribution is allocated across several city funds, based on how positions are actually budgeted, and so that's what that other department is.
Got it, thank you. And how does this compare to, at the moment, I know we have quite a lot of vacancies, I guess I'm curious if we have budgets, I wouldn't call them savings, but budget allocated for the vacancies currently, and then we also have this money here, I'm just kind of curious how they interact with each other.
So I'll just jump in, yeah. What we do is, because Measure C is sort of dedicated revenue, and we can only use it for the specified purposes that were in the original discussion that the council had and the ballot measure, we allocate, we actually put bodies into those positions first before we use, we put bodies into the general fund position. So all of the vacancy savings will always go to the general fund first before, and so we always make sure those positions are filled.
Got it, thank you. And so for the other categories, maintenance services and other department services, was that specifically the OPEB funding that you were discussing, or?
The other department is, because it is technically a non-departmental expense, and so we do separate that out. But maintenance services has its own line item, and it does have personnel in it, as well as operating type expenses.
Understood. And then to kind of echo my colleague's question about, you know, in emergency services headquarters, is there any room for us to allocate some of these dollars towards capital improvement, or would that be part of the report that you were mentioning before that will come before budget and finance?
Yes, there's always the opportunity for the council to sort of allocate those funds to capital needs. I think, as I mentioned, we are looking at building a sort of modular locker room facility that would allow for upgraded lockers for the police department. We're using some ARPA dollars for that, and then also using some Measure C dollars. So we have used it for other projects that meet the intent of the original measure. But yes, we can definitely bring a conversation about that to the council budget and finance committee.
Thank you.
Council member Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations, Director Gonzalez. I don't remember if I've had a chance to congratulate you in this setting, so thank you. I think this is a succession plan well thought out, so congratulations to everybody on that side, good job. I have lots of comments, but I know this is questions, so I'm going to try to form the answers I'm looking for in a question, so bear with me. Budget and finance committee met last week, that consists of myself, the mayor, and council member Cyrop. It was a great discussion. Can you please provide an overview? There was, there's a lot of information this committee would like to see come back, so just off the top of your head, I don't expect you to remember everything, but just kind of what stood out, what do you see as information that the public can expect in the near future?
I'm trying to remember, I apologize.
I don't have my notes in front of.
I don't have my notes in front, would you like, were you looking for a summarization of what I heard from?
Yeah, if you could, not everything, but just a few items, because it was a lengthy discussion, so.
Sure. You know, from what I recall from the conversation was, there was some, there was discussion about the 5.9 million dollars that was a one-time appropriation related to the workers' compensation, which I covered. There was obviously general support for this report and the changes proposed for fiscal year 2023 by all members of the committee, which is why it is here this evening. It is presented in the same form in which it was presented, so no changes recommended by the committee. There were conversations about Measure C and looking at long-term forecasts related to Measure C and potential public safety facility improvements and how Measure C could fund that. The committee will be providing, or will receive, I should say, a Measure C update as part of a regular standing item, and so that was a conversation as we are looking at, you know, how Measure C dollars have been spent, how they will be intended to be used in the future, and how we continue to leverage that tax. There was also a desire to look at finance policies specifically related to the real property transfer tax and that threshold, and what the policy is related to any revenue received in excess of that threshold, and so those were some of the conversations that we did have, and those policies will be presented as part of the budget document and presented to the committee for potential recommendation for changes to be included with the budget.
Thank you. And then just one more ask, just to add to that. I think there was an ask too about getting kind of a historical chronological timeline of all the ballot measures, because there's a lot of confusion in terms of the year, the ask, the renewal, just so we all have the same information. So I would encourage anyone to watch that meeting, it was a great discussion. Do you know when we'll be getting updates with regard to CalPERS and the discount rate? Is that already made public? Is that in discussion? When do we start factoring that in?
So the discount rate will hit, I believe, in the upcoming fiscal year to 6.8.
6.8, okay, okay, thank you.
Council member Roach.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Director Gonzalez. Nice to meet you, and thank you for this great concise budget review. I'm obviously coming in halfway through in this budget process, and I wasn't part of the earlier discussion, so I just have a couple of questions that may be more policy questions, but I'll just go and ask. I saw under fleet management that there was a request for 500,000 for extra, you know, from the original projection for increased fuel cost. So I'm just wondering, what are we doing to, you know, convert our fleet to electric so we're not, we're not subject to these fueling costs, fuel costs in the future?
Sure, sure. You know, and I'll let city manager McAdoo correct me if I'm incorrect, but we're always looking for ways in which that we can, as we replace the fleet, we're looking for ways in which we can be a greener city, looking at hybrid, looking at electric as options, but that we do have some vehicles specifically related to public safety that are gas-fueled vehicles, and so we do have that expense related to that, but it is a city's policy to purchase, like I said, hybrid or electric vehicles when appropriate.
Okay, yeah, I mean, just, I assume that's sort of a bigger question about sustainability issues.
Unfortunately, there's some vehicles that don't lend themselves to be, you know, like our fire engines, the trucks, but we are all, and often our police vehicles because of just the use patterns, being electric doesn't really work well with those. But pretty much all of our other fleet vehicles where, you know, like building inspectors, where we've got just regular city staff, sedans, we're trying to convert those to hybrid or electric as we can.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I guess at some point you hope they would offset the need for increased fuel cost. All right, thank you. And then the other question I had is, are we contemplating any need for, we have, what, a small rental assistance program, because with the eviction moratorium ending in the county, is there any projection that we're going to need to, I don't know, increase that fund?
Yes, and there's some other dynamics happening at the county where some of the legal resources that the county had paid for, for tenant legal assistance, some of those contracts were not renewed, so we're trying to assess what that impact looks like and maybe have a supplemental budget ask separately for some additional resources for that. I think we talked a little bit about the, you know, sort of the challenge we have with the tenants who may be facing eviction after the moratorium and the back rent, because we don't know which of those have gotten county assistance, you know, rental assistance, and so we can't, we wouldn't be able to use our ARPA dollars towards that because we can't defer, we can only, tenants can, you know, people can only get that money once from the federal government, that was part of the requirements. And so we're trying to figure out what makes the most sense, what programs can the city offer that will make the most sense to help with the tenants.
Okay, and so it sounds like, so that could be something that comes before the end of this fiscal year, okay. Okay, thank you, and otherwise, I mean, I, you know, it's a lot of information to take in, and I appreciate Director Gonzalez's concise information here. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Council member Goldstein.
Yeah, thank you, and, yeah, congratulations on your moves, both of you, and yes, thank you for keeping your presentation concise, that definitely works. Tell me something about the appropriations with respect to staffing levels. So we're down headcount, just in public safety, approximately 67 or 68 headcount, I think. Do the appropriations, what you're showing us on these mid-year appropriations, do they include or not include expense for the headcount that we're missing there?
So the appropriations were specifically related to COLA adjustments for HPOA, so Hayward Police Officers Association, and local 1909 fire, and then unrepresented staff, and so those were COLAs, and so those budgets were applied and increased based on what those COLA impacts were for the positions that are currently in our budget.
So if my math is correct, we're still short about 1.2 or 1.5 million dollars a year to cover those roughly 68 headcount, or are my numbers off?
Which headcount, I'm sorry?
So HBD has indicated to me that I think the current headcount, they're down 47, and I think another 18 at FAR, and that number might have changed, so that's what I'm talking about.
Yes, so the salary savings associated with those vacant positions, is that what you're referring to?
What I'm really after is a little bit more long-term view, what I'm hoping to do is figure out what goal should we be setting to make sure that our commitments are fully funded, so not just the headcount, but also in terms of all the added expenses that go along with it, no PEB and so forth.
Sure, so this is, this represents every budgeted position, so even those vacant positions, we do account for, we assume that they are filled, so that we can get a true projection of the impact it would be in future fiscal years. So it does include a full appropriation for fully budgeted staff, so even those positions that are vacant.
Okay, so the budget numbers, the appropriation numbers that you showed us today are fully staffed?
Correct.
And in fact, we're receiving, in a sense, some savings because we're not actually paying for those salaries since the headcount's not filled.
Right, and we did take a look at our, we do an estimate at the beginning of the fiscal year for salary savings, and we are very close to what we had estimated, because we do, we did use some of those salary savings to fund other unanticipated expenses, and so we do take a look at what we have pledged salary savings for to pay for and offsetting expenses, and so when you take into consideration these vacancies and the impacts for the COLAs adjustments, we are about hitting target for what we had projected for salary savings for this year.
Okay, so I think I'll have to take this next question and put the city manager in our private meeting. But is anyone else noticing that her microphone doesn't seem to be on? It's lit, but it's, I'm not hearing it in the room, I'm hearing your, over here.
Can you hear me okay?
I hear you because I hear the echo in the room, but not, I don't think you're coming out over the sound.
Let's try turning off the other microphones, because sometimes that.
Say something again, Nicole.
Can you hear me now? Is it better?
Just barely, yeah.
I'm like really close, too, I don't want to get too close, but I can try and get closer, I apologize.
Okay, yeah, I don't think it's you, there's something going on.
Okay, okay.
Anyway, that's it for my question, thank you.
There are no more questions, and then open up for a couple of comments. I don't see anybody online, and I'm sure in the audience, I can see if there's anybody in the audience that might make a comment, I couldn't see one whole other. Seeing nobody in public, I want to make a comment, I'd like to close a couple of comments.
entertain a motion in a second.
I'm happy to move staff's recommendation. I'll second. I'll second.
Moved by Councilmember Marquez, seconded by Councilmember Roach. And Madam City Clerk, could you take?
Can I make a quick comment?
You may make a comment, Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, I'll be quick. So thank you, City Manager, for bringing up that we're going to reengage with fiscal modeling. That was a very, very fun exercise to see in real numbers. You make this decision, boom, that's the impact. So it's really, really important. So my only ask is, before we do that, can the finance team collaborate with our, and I apologize, Mr. Nguyen's new title is what? I can't keep up with all these changes.
Chief Economic Development Officer.
Chief Economic Development Manager. Okay, so Director Gonzalez, could your team collaborate with his team? I really want to hear from his perspective with all his experience with Hayward separating, coming back. What does he think we need to do to look at bringing in more revenue? Because although it's important to look at these ballot measures, we can't always go to our voters, we got to step up and do our part. So I really want to bank on his expertise. Is that the health science, you know, more dealerships? What is it? We need to have a menu of options. So if that can be done in collaboration in advance too, that future planning would be helpful. Thank you.
Sure, sounds good.
Thank you. So moved by Councilmember Marquez, seconded by Councilmember Roach. City Clerk, can you take the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Andrews?
Aye.
Councilmember Goldstein?
Aye.
Councilmember Marquez?
Aye.
Councilmember Roach?
Aye.
Councilmember Cyrop?
Yes.
Councilmember Zerminio?
Yes.
Mayor Salinas?
Yes, thank you. Item passes unanimously. I'd like to move on to council reports and announcements. Are there any council reports and announcements? Councilmember Roach.
Because we're not meeting next week, I would just like to wish everyone a Happy St. Patrick's Day, which is next Friday, September, or sorry, March 17th, and I hope you all get to go have a pint somewhere.
Aren't you going to tell them the idea that we had, but?
Well, I didn't want to out you. Yeah, okay.
Well, you know, but it completely fell apart, not that we're not going to.
Mark had this really nice idea of us getting, we were going to surprise you all with like boutonnières, green boutonnières for St. Patrick's Day that week, and then we remembered there's no St. Patrick's Day meeting, so, I mean, no meeting that week, so it was a wonderful idea.
We tried.
I was ready to execute on that idea. So instead, Happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone.
We tried. Mayor Pro Tim Andrews.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm getting the message out early, because people have asked for this location. We are having a neighborhood beautification event in the Longwood community. It would be March 25th, Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at St. Joakim's, 21250 Hispearion Boulevard. Keep hairy cleaning rain, hashtag Hayward beautiful.
And then, Councilmember Francisco, is there anything you would like to share with us?
Yes, as a matter of fact, we're having a birthday pretty soon, and this is Hayward's 147th birthday, and it is this Saturday. I was working on marching bands, but unfortunately, we will not have any marching bands, but it's going to be a fantastic day, and it's a good opportunity for you to shop and eat in all of our downtown restaurants, and there are something like 30 of them. So make sure that you have a meal on Saturday in each one of them, and then walk around so you don't get overly overweight. So see you on Saturday to celebrate 147th birthday at 1:00. We're all going to get together at Main and B and sing "Happy Birthday Hayward." Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to just acknowledge and thank City Manager McAdoo for, you know, bringing up that item earlier this afternoon about allocating appropriate funds necessary for our unhoused population in the event that we need more housing during the storms on Thursday, Friday, and into the weekend. So I really want to appreciate that. Of course, wanted to make sure everybody stays safe this weekend during the storm. I'm assuming there's going to be sandbags still available?
Correct. At Barnes Court, at the Corporation Yard location, we should have sandbags available.
Perfect, okay. Thank you. And so, if there are no other comments, there are no council referrals, and I promised Mayor Pro Tim Andrews 9:00, but it is 9:14. Meeting adjourned.